Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, January 23rd, and if we'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we begin today, the first thing we want to do is see if there are any adjustments to the agenda. Any changes to our agenda? Any additions? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve today's agenda as written?
I'll make them up.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we'll move to our public comment period, and I'd like to remind everyone that the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of concern, and when invited to speak, please speak into the microphone for clarity, sign in, and state your name and address and the topic you're addressing. This morning, I see a number of people that I have seen recently at the Planning Commission. Just keep in mind, public meetings and public hearings have a lot in common. There's a gathering of public officials, and they include the input of citizens, but the main difference is that a hearing requires public input and is the public record. All right, with that, are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Please come forward, sign in, put your name and address, and then state that clearly into the microphone when you're ready to speak.
Good morning. My name is Justin Rexroad, Two Gustav Lane, Grand Marais. Currently, I'm the president of the Flintlock Range Association. In front of you this morning, Cook County Commissioners, you're going to be looking to approve or deny the lease and conditional use permit for the proposed shooting range on Cook County land. I wanted to come before you this morning to discuss the importance of a shooting range in this county. It holds many benefits, and I understand that there is, has been, and is some opposition towards it and what shooting ranges bring forward. Here are some of the benefits. This county is a major hub for recreation. When I think of, when I moved here almost 14 years ago, I couldn't believe what all was here, the infrastructure, the trails, hiking, snowmobiling, skiing, downhill skiing, campgrounds, lake accesses. It's monumental. This is a neat place to live, is a neat place to recreate. Tough winters, though, gotta tell you. But as an outdoorsman, which I have been my almost entire life, we're lacking one thing. That's a shooting range. An organized place for individuals to go to safely shoot, practice, learn. Most individuals in this county use gravel pits, and you're probably wondering why they're using gravel pits. They're wide open, have good backstop. Typically, most people aren't going to recreate in a gravel, excuse me, gravel pit. You know, if it's recreation, it's obviously going to be shooting. With the proposed shooting range, we're hoping to alleviate what is going on in some of the gravel pits, get people out of there. A lot of trash is carried in. Often, it's left behind after they're done shooting. It's not a pleasant scene. We've all seen the pictures. People need a good, organized place to go to shoot. In fact, when you have an organized place to shoot, that's an excellent opportunity to teach, train, and for our law enforcement partners qualifications. Currently, right now, law enforcement in Cook County, this includes Sheriff's Department, U.S. Border Patrol, U.S. Customs, have no place to train, practice, or qualify. This is a deficiency. We have spoken with them, and they are quite pleased to see this come forward. This is something they've been needing for many, many years, and I'm surprised it hasn't happened in the past. We are the last county in Minnesota to not have a public shooting range. I think we need to change that. Other benefits of the shooting range is education for the youth. Currently, our youth have no public shooting range to go to to take firearm safety, hunter safety. It's an excellent opportunity to get the youth to a shooting range, to teach them proper firearm handling, shooting techniques, and shooting is fun. It teaches discipline, teaches patience, and it can be a great sport to get into, such as target shooting, shotgun sports, high school trap league, or, excuse me, high school trap, yes, high school trap league. It's huge in Minnesota. It's one of the fastest-growing sports, and it has been for a long time. What a great opportunity for the youth to get involved in that. Youth sports are hard up here. They have to travel a long ways for prac, not for practices, excuse me, games, and this is something they'd be able to do locally. The adults of Cook County could use a good place to do shooting. There's a lot of adults that I have spoken to since all this has came about that later in life, 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, whatever age, have gotten into shooting late in life, and they absolutely enjoy it. But the problem is they have no place to go that's already set up to shoot, and a lot of them like to see that change. This would be an opportunity to have classes held, whether it be for basic firearm safety, defensive techniques, or sport. Shooting sports is something I've been involved in, and it is, it's a lot of fun, and it's a chance, if we could get something like this established in Cook County, it's another window of opportunity for people. We've looked at a lot of, lot of different places to have this range. This isn't probably the best place we've looked at. It's just close enough to town, but just far away, enough away where it's not going to be a hindrance. It's not going to be a nuisance. I'm well aware, and Flintlock Range Association is well aware, firearms make noise. That's just the way it is. But we also know one thing, too. This isn't going to be a massive gun club like down the metro area. We do see that the noise isn't going to be quite what probably some people maybe think. Maybe in our first one to two years of operation, we might see maybe 100, 150 members. We'll see how things go. This has been an initiative that I do believe started almost 20 years ago. There have been three separate groups that have tried to get this going. First group was looking for a chunk of land to buy. It didn't happen. Second group was well aware of the exchange that was going to happen with Cook County and the U.S. Forest Service and saw this chunk of land that may be available in the right zoning to have a shooting range, so they started pursuing it. And then something hit, pandemic, excuse me, pandemic hit, slowed things down, kind of threw a wrench in everything. Well, then a second group, or, excuse me, a third group came along, and we said, let's hit this home. I believe we have. We've done our homework, we've done sound studies, we have plans in place. The Flintlock Range Association is made up of a great group of people that have worked diligently and extremely hard to put all this together. Some of us, this may be our only type of recreation. I know I do a lot of other types of recreation myself, but this is a strong passion of mine. I believe a shooting range in Cook County is a great benefit to the county. It's the last puzzle piece to our recreation haven that we have up here in this county. We are at the end of the road, and so to ask folks to go to an organized shooting range, next closest one would be the Silver Bay Beaver Bay area, Silver Beaver Gun Club. That's over 50 miles away. That's a pretty good drive. We don't ask people to go 50 miles to snowmobile to hop on trailhead. We don't ask people to drive 50-some miles to get on a ski trail. They get on it right out their back door. Let's do that here. For the Commissioners of Cook County, I hope you can see what the Flintlock Range Association sees, a need, a want, for the youth, for the adults, and for our law enforcement partners. I thank you for your time, and I hope everything, we can get this, we can pull everything through with this. I know I'm excited, and there's a lot of members of the public that are extremely excited to see this come forward. Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
No pen.
All right, I took that right here.
Good morning. Mike Hofer, County Road 60, Grand Marais. I'm, want to address a gun range. First, by saying I'm not opposed to it. I'm a gun owner, an archer, a hunter, enjoy outdoor sports, but I'm also a property owner who will be affected by the noise pollution this range produces. So, I'm asking that the Commissioners approve the CUP and lease only upon those documents, including the following two things. Number one, some reasonable restrictions to the hours of operation. For example, Sunday closed, perhaps 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., rather than every day 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from May through November. There isn't enough time to go into the flaws of the sound study. It was done nine years ago, but the biggest flaw was having no pre-established noise acceptance level, and noise isn't just about hearing damage or decibel level. Noise has a subjective component. It impacts our health and well-being. Sound meters were not placed at any occupied properties, and the study was conducted by folks who are biased towards the implementation of the gun range. There were no affected property owners involved in the study. So, experiencing a neighbor shooting occasionally, or even having one to two shooting events a year, is one thing. I have firsthand experience of this at a distance of two miles. Shooting at this distance can be heard indoors and outdoors. I want to be clear on that. From a distance of two miles, it can be heard farther beyond two miles. It's not pleasant, and frequently, sometimes it gets annoying, but occasional and infrequent noise intrusion by a neighbor shooting occasionally or having one to two events a year is somewhat expected in our rural setting, and it's tolerable, knowing it's going to go away at some point. It's a completely different thing having shooting that is going to occur when, during the time of years you like to be outside, have your windows open. The outdoor sports park is completely different. Constant impulse noise, firearms, explosions can be expected and will occur any day or every day from dawn till dusk, May through November. That's completely unreasonable without some restrictions that protects folks' enjoyment of their properties and their property values. Folks that were there first and have an expectation of some amount of quietude. The nature of this project demands that each of you who are voting on this have gone out to a comparable range and subjected yourselves to a full day of the constant staccato explosions, and then try to imagine how that might change the enjoyment of your property. Not much different than had I been tapping this pen on the table while speaking to you. At some point, I think all of you would say, "Stop, that's annoying." But I'd say, "Doesn't harm your hearing. Plus, I don't have to stop because I can operate 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every day." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
I'm Mark Johnson, Harris, Minnesota. I'm speaking in opposition to the range. My wife and I own the land nearest the proposed shooting range, which is a quarter mile from corner to corner. Our farmer, Harris, is close to the shooting range, and we know firsthand the negative impact of a range on the surrounding area. I'd like to address a few of the points that, regarding the litter in the gravel pits. Prominent in the Flintlock Range PowerPoint are photographs of litter associated with the use of gravel pits as shooting ranges. Implied in the use of the photographs is the assumption that once the Flintlock Range is operational, the gravel pit users will quit using the gravel pits, and gravel pits will return to an unlittered state. Undoubtedly, some gravel pit users will abandon the gravel pits for the range, but it is not at all certain at all, or even most, of the gravel pit users will choose the cost and regulation of the range over the freedom of a gravel pit. With regard to the Minnesota noise pollution standards, gunshots are impulsive sounds. Minnesota does not have an impulsive sound standard. Minnesota noise pollution standards are based on equivalent continuous sound level analysis, or LEQ. The residential standard, the strictest standard, is L-10 and L-50. For a shooting range using best practices to be out of compliance with the state's L-10 standard, the LEQ must exceed 63 decibels for six minutes per hour. With the duration of a sound of a gunshot three to five milliseconds, for a shooting range to be out of compliance with Minnesota's standard, and this is using a generous 10 milliseconds for the duration of a gunshot, would require 36,001 gunshots per hour. To fire that many shots would require approximately 800 shooters firing an AR-15 rifle at a 45 rounds per minute. Minnesota does not allow a county to have stricter noise standards in the state. So, you, well, that's just, yeah. With regard to the high school clay target season. Practice for the 2024 Minnesota State High School Clay Target League, which includes a state tournament begins March 31st, and competition begins April 21st. The May through November months of operation and the Flintlock application do not correspond to the spring high school league season. With regard to resident versus non-resident shooters, the Flintlock PowerPoint states that recreational shooting is popular and will be a draw. Is it Flintlock's intent to draw substantial numbers of non-resident shooters to the county, or is it primarily to provide shooting opportunities to residents of the county? If it is to draw non-residents to the county, is it because having substantial numbers of non-resident shooters is necessary for the financial viability of the range? The question of the advisability of relying on non-resident shooters is not insignificant, and what protections will be in place to ensure that the range is not taken over by non-resident shooters? Now, I think most importantly here is with, in regard to the lease and the CUP, which is what assurances are that the Shooting Range Protection Act, which is a state statute, and the county lease and the CUP are not in conflict? The Protection Act was enacted to limit the liability of units of government to shut down shooting ranges. It is not all clear as to whether the county could terminate a CUP or a lease if it resulted in the closure of the range. At the very least, it is an action that could be challenged, and any number of associations or any other person with standing could mount a legal challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
Good morning. My name is Steve Persons. I'm a resident at 135 Lanell Road, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed range. I, for all the reasons that Justin laid out, there is tremendous value in having a facility like this available for recreation, for training, for safety's sake. So, I'm not going to reiterate any of those. I think he makes a lot of good points. I can say that years ago, when the Gunflint Sportsman's Association ran a small shooting range up just north of Devil's Track Lake, we did not, to my knowledge, and I was an officer of that association, we did not have noise complaints. Granted, it was not a particularly active association, but we had some events where quite a few people would show up, and we would shoot pretty consistently for most of the day, and I do not recall in that setting hearing any complaints come in, or hearing about any complaints. And that was a very short distance from quite a lot of residential development on the north shore of Devil's Track. So, there will be some noise. I'm thinking probably not to the level that some might fear. But all said, I think those issues are overwhelmed by the benefits. So, I urge you all to approve this application. I'm very much looking forward to having a facility like this to enjoy some archery and some organized shooting events, so I hope I can look forward to that while I can still see my sights. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Any other members of the public? Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed at this time. I'd like to thank you all. So, just so the public is aware, we do have two individuals on the phone with us that we're unable to attend in person today. Our county attorney, Molly Hickon, and our county administrator, James Yorkey. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware, that's why we have the microphone pointed in that direction. All right, at this point in time, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and are there any items a Commissioner wishes to pull? Any items to be pulled? Not I'd entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
A motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on.
Sullivan, could we, as, hold on. It's very dry in here. We discussed or mentioned, I mentioned, that just reading off what's, this isn't getting better. What's on the consent agendas? So, for those people that are not here or do not have an agenda?
Absolutely.
So, what is on the consent?
I'll do that since you're having?
I'm, yeah, I'm not the one to do it.
Throat issues. All right, so the items on consent today are claims, minutes of our January 2nd and January 9th meetings, a donation, Le Grand de Nord gravel cycling event permit, the Wolf bikepacking race event permit, the Fox bikepacking racing event permit, community center board bylaws, modification of agreement with the Forest Service regarding Bolly Creek Trail, and two final payment requests for the bridge over Junko Creek and the Flute Reed River. Thank you for reminding me.
Thanks.
All right. So, those were approved unanimously. We're on to item four, which is the Highway Department, and I see that our Highway Engineer, Robbie Haas, is here with us this morning. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
In front of you is a grant resolution, a resolution of support. There's another grant we are pursuing to kind of complement one we already got. And so, if you remember, we've talked a little bit about a multi-use trail we're scheduled for construction, still on Schedule Four, which is great for 2025. That would kind of connect that one we did over by GES, so up the Gunflint and around to Fifth Avenue, down in front of the recycling center. We received a grant a couple of years ago through the Transportation Alternatives Program for a little under $450,000, which is great. Federal funds can only, can only go up to about 80% of the project cost, and so what this grant is, is that remaining 20% of the project cost. And so, what we're going to submit for is that remainder, which is about $110,000, and so part of that application is a letter of support, or a resolution of support from our county board. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for our Highway Engineer this morning? I know it's exciting to just get that final fifth and get this done. We've been working on this for a while. Any questions or comments? Not I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to the active transportation grant resolution.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starley. So, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our Soil and Water Conservation District Water Planner, Elena Hansel, is with us this morning, and she's here to talk about something that's kind of dear to my heart. So, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I do have a presentation just for the visual folks and to help guide this conversation. I spoke to you a while ago about the One Watershed One Plan, so this is just an update and anticipation. So this is just an update and anticipation for adopting an MOA and a resolution in February following our policy committee meeting. So just going through this quickly, we have, the county has two water plans currently. They have the Lakes Pier North, One Watershed One Plan that's currently adopted. And then we have the Cook County Water Plan, which is expiring, and we're going to be transitioning into this Rainy River Headwaters Vermillion Watershed Comprehensive Water Plan, which is why I'm here today. The plans are meant to help inform the Cook County Land Use Guide and kind of what's, it's like, that's up here, and then the water plans are underneath here, and to guide work for those of us working with the environment. It's also, just to be aware, that I am the county water planner and the SWC water planner. So I kind of wear two hats when I go into this. I understand that I'm representing both agencies, and that's just the way it is. It is everywhere because basically our role is just making sure that this plan is getting followed and we're, it's getting implemented. All right, Jan, I normally have bad luck. Oh, it worked. All right. So just a quick reminder for the overview, because a lot of people are wondering, how are these plans governed? This one has a policy committee, a commissioner from each of the counties, and a supervisor from each of the conservation districts. It's currently how it's set up. It can always change, but there's a process through that. There's a steering committee, so that's the county water planners, and then normally there's an assistance from the environmental directors or staff from each of the counties, and we meet monthly, sometimes a lot more often than that. And then we've had advisory committees that meet, and when we're developing the plan as we are now, sometimes we meet every month, sometimes we meet quarterly. Once the plan is adopted, we meet twice a year. And it's a huge swath of partners, whoever we can gather in to come to these meetings and just inform, because we're all working for the same goal and with a lot of the same ideas. So there's a lot of overlap in ways that our partnerships can grow. So, quick overview, this is our whole plan area. I'm not going to read all the little facts, but it's huge. It encompasses Lake County, Cook County, St. Louis County, Koochiching, and the tribal lands of the Boys Fort Banda Chipewa. So we have a lot of partners involved in this. Koochiching has opted out to be a member of the plan because they are such a tiny part of it, they don't have to be included. Cook County opted to be in, even though we only have about twenty-four percent of the land, and most of that's federal. We weren't able to get out of it, so we just are trudging forward with it, and it'll benefit us in the long run. So the plans need to be targeted, they need to be measured, and they need to be, have priorities. We can't just go out there and say, we're going to do whatever we want, this all looks great. So what we've done over the last year plus is we've looked at some of these priority issues. Again, for everybody's interest in time, I won't read all of them. I'm happy to send you to a whole video that we have on all of this. But some of our main concerns and issues are shoreline erosion, wild rice protection, land use changes, eroding stream banks, altered hydrology, which would be things like undersized culverts, or groundwater quality and sustainability. So those are just, that's a high level of our priority issues. Within the plan, these are broken down into actions that we're going to implement to address these priority issues. With those priority issues, we kept coming back to that there's these overarching lenses or themes that we need to really incorporate into our work. That would be climate variability and resilience. So when we do our projects, you know, if we have, culverts are easiest because that's the easiest for people to visualize. If you've got a culvert this small and you've got a stream, you know, that's out to here, and we keep having our different precipitation, it's going to continually erode around that culvert or blow it out, so it could cause safety issues for roads, it can cause water quality issues, it can cause habitat issues. So an example would be is when we're looking at those, we need to address what size does that culvert need to be. So that's, you know, one thing, looking at trees and forests, how do we manage the forests with our changing climates? We're looking at cultural resources, so wild rice, and how do we help protect our waters for wild rice? Again, they're also very dependent on that climate variability. We look at social capacity. How do we get some of the underserved communities maybe able to access the environment more as we're addressing some of our issues? What's more education outreach we could provide? And then really also equity, inclusion, and diversity, making sure we're not just getting certain brackets of people, but really trying to be inclusive. So these are our lenses that we're using as we address our implementation in the plan with what we're going to do. So again, I said they had to be prioritized, and needed to be targeted, and need to be measured. So this is, this is an example of a map that's in there, where we did a lot of work in the background. There's a lot of formulas and different things that go into this. A lot of that work was done with the MPC eight through the watershed restoration and protection strategies, and it looks at water quality. And so these are the priority lakes that we address. This is a plan that's more of protection, it's not a plan of restoration. We're lucky in Cook County because both of our plans are protection plans. And so we're going to look at what are things we can do, for example, on Seagull Lake or Loon Lake. Loon Lake is what's known as a phosphorus-sensitive lake. So that means, for example, land services, we work with them. When they have land use permits coming in, we're helping to provide some of that data and information so they can make more informed decisions. And educating landowners, I know a lot of landowners out there, so we're able to work with them, and making good decisions to keep the water quality clean. So we've got priority lakes for different reasons throughout the watershed that we'll work with, and these were, be our main focus, because there's a lot of lakes in this watershed. We look at streams, the same thing. Cross River went from a, I don't, I'm bad with all these terms, but they're now an exceptional use. So that means it is like highest quality you can get. And so Cross River, we want to protect, we want to look and make sure the land use practices are keeping it at that really high level. So we have priority streams, so we prioritized, we've targeted. These are targeted areas of work for, when we have funding, we want to make sure we're trying to address these areas first. We also have to measure it. We're using taxpayer dollars. We can't just go out there again and just put Band-Aids on the landscape. We need to be able to say, how are we going to measure it? So what we've done is within the plan, we have these priorities, and we have these areas that we're going to look at, and then we're going to try to achieve these goals, working with all our partners, and track it. So, for example, lake management, lakeshore management, we're going to look at two miles of lakeshore that we're going to restore to natural vegetation. And while two miles might not seem like a lot, you know, that's ten thousand plus feet of shoreline. And if you think of how much property people have, that's like one land at a time. So it's a ten-year plan, it's going to take some time. We don't, we aren't going to get graded, we aren't going to get scolded if we don't achieve these measurable goals. This is just something for us working in this field to have to work towards. So these are our, how we're going to measure the plan. The state does look at this. If you remember a while ago, when I said Lakes Pier North went through this whole process to say, what have we achieved? We got the highest marks, so we were pretty proud of that. That's how we did it. We had measurable goals, and we looked to see where we achieving these, where we working towards these. Implementation, just so you know, we have this memorandum of agreement with all of our partners, so that's Cook County, Cook SWCD, Lake County, Lake SWCD, St. Louis County, and then North St. Louis SWCD. We have agreement between us, the North St. Louis folks at the SWCD, they're the fiscal agent for the funding. And then we have a lot of other collaborator collaborations that might come in and say, hey, can we work with you? Like the city of Ely may want to come in and do a stormwater management plan. So they'll work with their folks in that area, and maybe they'll set up some sort of formal agreement and be able to come in and tap into some of these resources that come with the plan. So often we get the question of, who, why do I care? What's the benefit to me? How does this plan relate to my community? Landowners, it provides opportunity through well sealing, shoreline planting, septic upgrades. This plan comes with over a million dollars that we split between our partners. So, you know, we're going to try to achieve some of these things for our communities. Lake associations, they often want help with outreach and development or providing workshops. Cities and townships, they can use them for stormwater plans, shoreline projects, road and stream crossings. And then businesses also, you know, just in our office, we've done guest information for some of the resorts and hotels just in Cook County, so it's an opportunity up in this area. Maybe small-site stormwater plans or shoreline projects. So it's not just a, it's, you know, a plan for municipalities, this also impacts our communities, and we're able to help and support our communities to keep the area in good condition. So where are we at in the process? We've gone through all of those steps, and we're in the formal review process. We're pretty excited about that. This Friday, we have our policy committee meeting, which is also going to be our public meeting. So we'll have people available if they want to provide that last comment before we go into plan adoption. And then what happens is the plan will go through adoption process. We have to go to the Board of Water and Soil Resources, once the policy committee approves this. We'll have to go to them in March and present the plan full. And before that, I will be coming forward in February to ask the board to adopt a resolution for, and it was in the packet, so you can review it, but it's a resolution so that we can move forward with the plan adoption, and then a memorandum of agreement, which is to implement the plan and to adopt the plan. These are all similar processes that we went through with the Lakes Pier North plan, but you're all very new. So just want to explain kind of the process that we go through. Attorney Hickon has reviewed the documents and gone through it. She did not see anything that was concerning. Again, because we've been through this before, it kind of helps. And so I just wanted to present this to you so you kind of knew when I come back in February in a week or two, this is what you're adopting. The full plan, which is a hundred and some pages, is available online if you want to review it, if you hadn't had the opportunity. It actually is a kind of an easy read, there's a lot of pictures and just diagrams for you. So with that, are there any questions? I know it's a lot of information, I tried to scale it down and keep it kind of very high, high level for you.
Thank you so much. Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Hawkins?
I just want to say thank you first.
Yes.
Because this is so helpful.
Yes.
You know, this has been complicated for me, and I appreciate you taking the time to give us an update before we're asked to pass the resolution.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah. Nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have, I wrote down one, two things here, but I'm going to look the other one up.
Okay.
But.
Don't hesitate to ask.
I, I will, you know me. So there was an acronym in one of the slides above, Partner NRCS.
Yes. That's a federal agency, the Natural Resource Conservation Services.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. A lot of our landowners here don't use, well, in the past, they've used them, for example, for hoop houses, because they work a lot with the Department of Ag. And so they go federal program. We are getting actually more money, which is exciting, through the Conservation District. So we'll be able to work with landowners that have, example, spruce breadworm is the easiest one. When they come forward now to call our office, we can help connect them with NRCS, and there's a lot of funding out there now. We're getting, just, this is just for Lakes Pier North, but we're getting money. I don't remember the numbers. And so landowners can come in and maybe get their land cleared and get new trees put in through the NRCS. So, yep, good question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Well, I just want to thank you so much for the update. I would concur, it's nice to get the information in the background for us prior to us taking a look at a resolution in the future. And I want to thank you on Friday for running the public hearing that'll be up at the Seagull Community Center. That's at ten AM for individuals that would like to attend there, or you could attend with me and Ely.
Yeah. Or you can come Zoom. Be a Zoom.
And Zoom option as well. So, yeah, lots of opportunities for input. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on now to item six, and we see that Rowan Watkins is here for us. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, today we have some new fiscal year housekeeping items for you, the first of which is our two thousand twenty-four PC and laptop replacement. And so we're requesting to spend seventy-six thousand six hundred dollars in budgeted MIS capital funds for regular replacement of PCs and laptops across the entire organization. And so the breakdown on that is thirty-three laptops, six desktops, five MDCs or mobile data computers, which are a hardened ruggedized laptop that our deputies use, a highway engineer laptop, which is a little bit higher spec and why it's separated out, as well as forty UPSs or universal power supplies. And all of those have three-year replacement schedules, and so it's a third, each of them, of what we hold, with the exception of the UPSs. And we're just playing a little bit of catch-up on the UPSs because of not being able to get them with COVID. And so we're catching back up on that. Why we do this, regular replacement of laptops and just equipment in general is really geared towards reducing downtime and improving organizational efficiency, especially with a department as small as ours and the number of devices that we need to support and staff that we support, making sure that equipment is not old and failing constantly really makes us able to do what we do. Some other considerations and benefits to maintaining a regular replacement schedule include keeping up with technology advancements, changes, minimizing security concerns, staying ahead of end-of-life, and then compatibility and integration with other systems and softwares as things move forward and change. And so that's why we do it, and that's what we're looking to do today.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner White?
Are we purchasing or leasing?
We purchase.
Okay. And then could you explain what work is behind, say, Commissioner Hawkins, we will give you a new laptop, so you don't just switch out and hand her the laptop. What behind-the-scenes work, does it entail to have that happen?
Sure. So there's, it varies from user to user. So depending on job position and description, you might have a different set of requirements. But really, it's, we'll get into the licenses and other things that we're buying below this and in other items, but it's creating a user, making sure you're joined in the network in a way that you need to be so that you can access the shared files and systems that you need to, licensing and installing the different types of software and tools that you need to do your job. That's the main components and process of building out a laptop or PC for an individual user.
And then what happens with the old ones?
Again, depending on the use, they are electronic recycling, and there's different types of requirements for that. So if it's CJDN, or there's HIPAA concerns or other different types of data, CJDN is Criminal Data Justice Network. Depending on the type of information that has been on that PC and laptop, the hard drive will be removed and then certain standards to dispose of that properly.
Thank you.
In general, electronic recycling.
And I'd just like to comment, I so appreciate, even though these are all approved in the budget, just the transparency and bringing this forward and letting the public know what all goes into your budget and what goes into the work that your department does. So I appreciate that. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I really appreciate this, Rowan, because technology moves really fast, and sometimes if you have an old computer, it doesn't compute. So I did not realize there was a distinction between an engineer and a law enforcement, being obviously a little bit more rugged or usable than what, you know, what we have. So I appreciate understanding all that, too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And it's really, I mean, we try as best we can to have a standard solution for everybody, but the type of work that the deputies do, obviously a more ruggedized computer is something that they need. And then with the highway engineers, just a little bit higher spec for the processor intensive software that they're running when they're using CAD and drawings and designing things is a requirement there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is two thousand twenty-four Microsoft Office three sixty-five licenses. And so the request is approval to spend sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents in budgeted MIS funds for two thousand twenty-four Office three sixty-five licenses across the organization. So this is for every employee. There was a quote attached. Office three sixty-five provides Office applications, so that's your Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and others. But in this case, for us, for Cook County, it's also our cloud storage and communication and collaboration tools, so OneDrive, Teams, SharePoint, as well as device management. And it also includes support and updates and the security compliance tools across the organization. So it's one of our larger and broader software suites that this license is needed for basically every employee.
Thank you. Great explanation. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Rowan, for this. Just a point of order, I believe we've approved all of these already, so I don't know that we actually need to take votes on them. I think that information is extremely important, and it's good for us to hear that, but I think for all of these, it's.
I would agree. I was surprised the way that it was written in the agenda. But what we could do is listen to the remainder of your requests, and then, since we made a motion for the first one, approve the others jointly.
Sure. And then I guess just for my knowledge, Commissioners Brady, if it's a capital item over a certain dollar value, even though it's already been approved in the budget, it doesn't need to come back to the board? It, it.
It does by policy, yeah. It could, it could be either consent or.
Yeah, it could be on a consent.
My apologies. No worries. All right. If you'd like, I can run the next couple together.
Let's do that.
One single.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is our 2024 copier replacement, and in this case, we're asking to spend $16,000, again in budgeted funds, for two large multi-function printers. The copier fund is funded through a per-copy chargeback to county departments. So the more you use it, the more you print, the more your department gets charged into this fund, the fund accumulates, and we use that fund then for the purchase and replacement of new equipment, but also the maintenance, toner, paper, all that fun stuff associated with that. Again, regular replacement schedule, we're up for two, and so we're looking for two there. And the total is $16,000 in budgeted funds. And then the last one is a 2024 Adobe purchase. And so we're looking to purchase 80 licenses of Adobe Pro for a total of $8,560 in, again, budgeted funds. And the MIS, this is new to our budget this year. And so we're, we're looking to save the county by doing a large collective purchase. And so individual departments have been buying them as they need to. And when you buy them one-off, it's about $250 per license for the year. And when we do a large collective purchase like this, we're going to get them for $107 per license, so a very significant savings at that, that volume. And what is Adobe? What does it do? It allows our users to create and edit PDFs, convert PDFs from two other file formats and vice versa, Excel or Word to PDF and vice versa. Security properties, encrypt, and then digitally sign PDFs. And a really nice and big feature that saves a lot of time is also OCR or Optical Character Recognition, which recognizes text in scanned documents, allowing it to be searchable. And so, you know, if we scanned in a bunch of old hard copy permits or something, and you wanted to then search them by PID or landowner name, you could do that instead of having to page through and read through all of them. So a lot of efficiency and a good financial savings, but new to the MIS budget this year. So I would, I would request approval to purchase and spend all of those items listed.
And I like the idea of buying in bulk and saving money. So is there a motion to approve items B, C, and D jointly?
Some would.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Have motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner?
I just have one little question. How many multi-function printers do we have?
So we used to have 14. We've dropped that number down to 12. And so there was a seven-year replacement schedule where we're doing two a year. We're still on that, so it's, they're about 8,000 per unit. And so, but I think, starting this year, we'll start having a conversation with Brady and his office about how that fund is, is sitting, if we're printing enough to keep that replacement schedule the way it is with two less printers, or if we need to adjust that or adjust the chargeback formula. But so the replacement schedule reflects two a year. Because we had 14, we're up for replacement on these two, but the total number now is down to 12.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second. Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
And your explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time.
Madam Chair, I just had a question, just so I can be better prepared. What is that capital amount, Brady? Do you, do you know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head.
Good question. We'll follow up on that. All right, we'll go on to item seven, which is Land Services. And I see that we have Director Nelson and Neva Maxwell with us this morning. Good morning to both of you. Good morning.
Welcome.
Need a break.
All right, well, we are here to, first of all, talk about the Pamela Swenson rezone request. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Planning Commission held the public hearing at the January 10th meeting for a request to rezone a one-acre piece of parcel property in Tofti, owned by Pamela Swenson. Currently, the property is split-zoned between single-family residential and general commercial. And this property is directly adjacent to that recently-approved planned unit development for that 22-unit residential development that was reviewed in December of last year. So for reference, it's right next to Birch Grove Community School. It used to be the bus garage for the school. So the owners of the property are currently converting that bus garage into a dwelling. She gave me a tour while I was doing my site visit, and they maybe jumped the gun a little bit on that conversion from the bus garage into a house. So we kind of put the pause and said we either need to make this a conforming use for the zone district through a rezone, or look at a conditional use permit application, because a single-family dwelling in a commercial, general commercial zone district needs a conditional use permit. So the rezone request seemed more aligned for a long-term use of the property rather than a conditional use. So this is the route that she chose to move forward with. And so the Planning Commission, during the public hearing, they reviewed the, the application itself. There was one comment-written letter from the town of Tofti in support of the project. Town of Tofti did want some of the outdoor storage materials to be removed, but there's no condition on a rezone. So it was a general support of the proposal. During the public hearing, there was nobody present to speak to the request, and there's nobody in the public there to speak to it either. The Planning Commission had a discussion kind of about tax, property taxes and use. But the material points of the discussion were that the focus of the use and the rezone should be about the use of the property in the future, not really about taxes. And so they voted four to two to recommend approval of the request, and they strongly cited that 22-unit residential development, just that there is going to be so much increased residential usage in that locality. And so now I'm bringing it to you.
Thank you so much. Other questions for Neva? Any comments? Commissioner Hawkins?
I, I have a question about a split parcel. Is it common in our county to have one parcel have in two zones?
Unfortunately, it's more common than you would think. It's, it's very annoying, frankly, as a zoning administrator. So we apply the setbacks per the area that is in that zone district, and then the uses too. So really, it can be quite problematic for people when they have general commercial property that's split-zoned with residential. We see some of those parcels have a hard time selling because lenders have trouble on that side of things. So it is nice to have it all one zone district.
That kind of made sense. Commissioner Starley, this is in your district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm very familiar with that bus garage. I can't imagine it becoming a house, but it's big enough, they can probably partition some of it off. But what happens with septic and water and all of that now making it a residential place?
Yeah, so they already have a septic tank on the property, and that's already connected in there. And then she's planning, she's been working with a septic designer to get a little mound put in between some of the parking area and the road. And I believe there's water already. I guess I never saw the well when I was on-site.
Yeah, I'm not familiar because it was only used for storage for many years.
Yeah, my inside tour does, did show me that she kind of lowered the roof line, and the inside looks like an apartment at this point. So if this got denied, then they would have to come forward for an after-the-fact conditional use permit since that process has already started.
Is there any other land in this area behind the bus garage that's doable for more sites? Or is it just then we get into the housing that's going to happen?
Yeah, on the parcel itself. Yeah, the parcel itself is pretty limited. There's a lot of impervious surface area because of all the parking gravel that's been brought in. That is probably one of the most problematic parts of the transition. And then what's not gravel is pretty much wetlands. So that, that one spot identified is kind of the best spot for a septic treatment area.
Okay, thank you.
I think everybody would recognize it. It's just immediately east of Birch Grove. You see it every time you drive by, yeah. Any additional questions or comments for our plant? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Neva, for the presentation. And I know zoning changes are no small task and, and can be really tricky. So I just want to applaud your, your efforts and your ability to navigate the challenges here and make it very smooth for us. So thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Some would, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to item B, which is the Flintlock Range Association Conditional Use Permit. I'm going to reconnect her before this starts. Thank you. We're going to reconnect with our county attorney on the phone line, and then we'll begin.
Hello?
Hi, Molly. It's Jana, and we are about ready to start the conditional use permit conversation, so we'll get you connected.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move forward now with our Flintlock Range Association Conditional Use Permit, or CUP.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in thinking about how to present this information to you, it's, it's quite a bulky piece of processing information. So I'm going to try to be overall thorough, but not get too bogged down, and you can ask what clarification questions you want from there. So first off, for the application itself, this is a request for a conditional use permit for an outdoor sports park, including shooting ranges and courses with public and private events on a county-owned parcel. The parcel is within the FAR One Zone District. Flintlock Range Association is the applicant. The parcel is 360 acres. And in the FAR One Zone District, private and public recreational facilities, such as camping areas, golf courses, et cetera, are listed conditional use. The property is non-shorland, so there is no shoreline area in this area. The conditional use permit would operate seasonally, from spring to late fall. The applicants have proposed during daylight hours, dawn to dusk. And the, I think, I think that's kind of the overall about the application itself. For the public hearing summary, the Planning Commission held its public hearing during its December meeting. I first received this application November 1st, so we publicly noticed it, sent out all the letters, and the December 13th Planning Commission was, evening was when they held the public hearing. I received some written correspondence for the application through the public comment process. Let's see, so two written comments were received during the written comment period. One was neutral to the request, but wanted to share design references and expressed design was an important consideration for these type of facilities. And then the other comment letter was opposed to the request by nearby private property owners. During the public hearing, Mr. Johnson, who was the private property owner who wrote, written opposition, was present and spoke against the application. And then Steve Persson's was also present, and he spoke in favor of the request. The Planning Commission held a lengthy discussion about the application, and they discussed noise, they discussed lead mitigation, kind of the appropriateness for this use in that location. And ultimately, they recommended unanimous approval of this request. I'll ask Tim Nelson to maybe highlight a little bit about noise, since that is probably the primary concern with these type of activities.
Thank you, Neva. Yeah, as it, as I'll boil down, and all the comments that you've heard, both at the public hearing and today in the public comments portion of it, there doesn't seem to be actual outright, not, non-support for the facility itself. It is the noise that is really the, the crux of the matter. And if anybody has been a part of public hearings going on, noise always seems to be kind of the biggest thing. And more frequently, we're, we're looking at noise when it's with regards to sled dog kennels or other such things. And so noise is a pretty common issue that we do have to discuss, and one of the decision criteria is based on for conditional use permits. And, you know, certainly it, it, what I've come to basically experience, and it has played out over the course of the years, both here and, and other counties, is that it's very easy to generate the worst-case scenario in a person's head in terms of when an application is being submitted, whether it is for a sled dog kennel or something. And, you know, you, you all of a sudden understand maybe a new operation is going to be by you, and you're just like, oh, my God, these dogs are going to be barking incessantly for, for 24/7, or it's going to be the, as you heard this morning, the tap on the, on the thing for the entire day. And generally, what, what happens, it never really plays out to what the worst-case scenario is. We do have mitigation issues in line, and that's one of the reasons why we had long ago adopted the Minnesota Rule 7030 with regards to the noise standards. It applies to everything, regardless of what the noise is, whether it's sled dogs, wood chipping operations, gravel excavation, or anything like that. We do have those standards that are in place, and that allows for us to be able to address any of the noise issues should they come up. If they exceed those standards, as was reported a little bit even earlier today, you got to shoot 36,000 times to be able to exceed that standard. So that's not really the thing. What it is, is looking at mitigation standards to be good neighbors and to see how that noise can be basically mitigated. And the, the standards, whether they're county standards or whether they're state standards, doesn't really address whether something's annoying or not. It gets to whether it actually surpasses an objective standard. Certainly, you know, hearing a neighbor dog barking, regardless if it's a conditional use permit or not, is going to be annoying after a while. But there's nothing inherently that anybody can do anything really about that unless it exceeds a, a standard that goes. So it basically, what we're looking for is whether, you know, we have the tools in place to be able to enforce whatever the, the noise standards would be, and whether we can employ mitigation standards, you know, as enforcement. And we're looking at basically the overall criteria in terms of the application as to whether you have a well-operated facility or a non-well-operated facility. There's good players, there's bad players. And one of the things to actually think about in this particular case is, interestingly enough, because of the situation or the placement of this facility and the fact that it's surrounded by all public lands, one can actually go off of the range facility much, much, much closer to any private lands are out there and legally be able to shoot their gun anytime they want because it's public lands. They just have to be at least 400 feet away from an occupied dwelling or so. So there, there is that we would be looking, or some of the concern is to set standards maybe that are in excess of what you would experience if you step one foot or 10 feet closer to or off of the property than what would be on the Flintlock Range. And I would say too, just a kind of a general observation is that, you know, there is optimism on behalf of the range folks that there would be a lot of good participation in pulling people out of gravel pits. I'm, you know, I, I kind of question as to how many people actually will drive from Schroeder up to that. So I don't know that there's going to be that much of an increase in terms of the amount of noise that's going to be in that area or participation in that, maybe over the course of time. But that's, you know, other than answering any questions that you may have, you know, we, we did this, the county board here has already considered this application, and there was some concern or discussion with regards to whether being able to accommodate law enforcement, got kicked back to the Planning Commission and then brought back here with the exact same recommendation. So the noise was presented to the Planning Commission through the public hearing process. They did have the discussion, and that's what's being presented to you guys today.
Thank you so much. Are there questions for either our zoning administrator or Director of Land Services? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
stands out with me is Attorney Higgins' comment about a five-year lease with an option to renew or not. So I would say because we're hearing about the noise effect, that the person that's the chairman or the head of the Gunflint Association, Flintlock Association, could maybe take into consideration the first year of maybe not being sunrise to sunset, maybe having a little bit more constricted hours, and, you know, and see how that goes. As far as probably certain events, you're going to have some timeframe with that. But you consider May through at least September, it's light way into the evening, so that, you know, maybe you could respectively consider having the first year some limited type hours to see how that goes. And then we can look at the option here about looking at the five-year lease with the possible renewal each time. Other than that, I don't have any particular things against this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us, and maybe like Tim says, maybe they won't drive from Schroeder or Tofti, but maybe they'll come for an event. And so, we don't know what the continued use of a gravel pit will be. I have one up the Caribou Trail that I get calls about. And so we'll just have to see, you know, if there's decrease or increase or whatever. But basically, I think this is a great asset for the county.
I guess one thing I can respond to regarding hours and days of operation, because those were brought to my attention, this range is in my district. And so, along with emails and calls, other commissioners have received, I have received a number of them. And so, at the last Flintlock meeting, I did bring that up, and the Flintlock Board was very interested in working with the community members who are concerned about establishment of hours of operation and days. And typically, what happens is this broader range is included so that law enforcement can do their low-light shooting, all right? But if you look at other ranges, and I tried to research, I went to Caribou, I looked at Gopher, I looked at Minnetonka Sportsman's Club, and the Minnesota Horse and Hunt Club, just to get an idea. And they all have different hours, not what's included in state statute. They limit those hours. It could be 9:30 to 5:00, or, you know, 10:00 to 6:00, or there's a day off. But that's something that the Flintlock Range Association would establish and indicated at their last meeting that they were willing to work towards. Are there other questions or comments for either Neva or for Tim?
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if you guys could just maybe touch on the whole picture with the conditional use, the lease, and how that ties into state statute, and maybe Attorney Higgins wants to weigh in on that, too, just how the whole picture works for the public, so that there's common understanding.
Sure. Okay. Chair and Commissioner Mills, I'm happy to comment. Just kind of give a summary, although if you want to hear all about the lease, I've got a lot of comments that I've saved for the next agenda item. I'm wondering if commissioners would like to hear all about the lease, since the lease is incorporated into the conditional use permit by one of its conditions. But then I can cover the overlap of statute, zoning law, and our lease.
I'm seeing a lot of nods here on the dais, so I would say, please, go ahead.
Okay. So, I think, so there are different areas of law that are applicable here. We've got our zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance, which has been in place since 1984, long before 87A, which is the Minnesota statute about shooting ranges, was enacted. It was enacted in 2005. I think it became effective 2006. And then, in addition to that, there are property rights at issue. So property law is at issue when we bring the lease into effect. And then there's a set of regulations, which actually reaches back to a publication of the National Rifle Association called "The Range Book of Performance Standards and Best Practices." I think that's what the title of that book is called. So that's privately published, but it's incorporated into the statutes, and every shooting range must be compliant with the best practices in that handbook, which is available in my office. I ordered it last fall when we first started contemplating this lease. I want to address 87A first, because I think it's the biggest concern. It appears to be one of the biggest concerns, along with noise, that neighbors have. 87A is an entire chapter that the legislature enacted. I think it was essentially, in part, to protect shooting ranges, which were being closed all over the state due to nuisance actions brought against them. And, but it does also have many protections for the residents who, you know, surrounding the shooting ranges. It addresses the shooting range performance standards and incorporates those into law. It addresses the mitigation area. It addresses noise standards. There's actually a specific noise standard and method for testing noise that is part of the shooting range statute. And the biggest concern about 87A that neighbors have brought up is, excuse me, 87A-07, which is entitled "Closure of Shooting Ranges." So I want to make sure commissioners understand that this statute section exists and should be taken into consideration. What it says is that "A shooting range shall not be forced to permanently close or permanently cease any activity related to the primary use of the shooting range unless the range or activity is found to be a clear and immediate safety hazard by a court of competent jurisdiction." So the statute says that we have to approve up to that threshold of a clear and immediate safety hazard in order to get a permanent closure of the shooting range. And that's, you know, that's a barrier. That would be a barrier, potentially. But there's no case law out there, the statute hasn't really been tested, that I can find, especially as compared to property rights, a lease hold, and zoning ordinances. It also, it goes on to say that "Nothing in this section prohibits a court from granting a preliminary injunction against any activity or against any individual determined to be the cause of the safety hazard." And it doesn't restrict, oh, yeah, I'm just going to repeat myself there. So there are remedies that are present, even if you can't permanently close. Now, all of that, if you considered it by itself, would be a big concern and a big risk to the county. But our arrangement is special here, and the 87A enacted in 2005, it affects every shooting range in this state, whether created on or after the year of enactment. It's a fact. It's going to affect every shooting range. It's a risk that it could impede the closure of this shooting range. But the county is going to have the most control over the operations of this shooting range if it is on public land, and the public, Cook County, can hold the users of the range accountable to their lease terms. Essentially, we have property rights over this land, which any court would need to balance against those closure provisions in 87A. We also have the zoning ordinance, which, because it was in effect 20 years before, excuse me, 20 years before the shooting range statute, is still in effect as against, to Were this shooting range to be established on private land in Cook County? The county would need to allow it, so long as it was compliant with 87A perpetually. We wouldn't have the same relationship with the range operator as we would under this lease with the CUP, in which we can supervise their compliance, and we have a line of communication we can use to work out problems. And if it was put on land that didn't require a conditional use permit, then we might not have a conditional use permit. Our conditional use permit adds those additional controls to the land, and it's required under our zoning ordinance, again, which supersedes the statute so long as it's consistent. And then the lease adds additional restrictions. First of all, it's for a five-year period, and either party can end that lease after the five years. We would have to agree to renewal. That would be another opportunity for negotiations if conditions need to be changed after five And the range book is important, too. It addresses those shooting performance standards. It addresses noise mitigation. It addresses signage, the essential rules of the shooting range, which can be for safety. And so, and again, that's incorporated in the statute. The lease requires that the shooting range comply with the CUP. The CUP requires that the shooting range comply with the lease. Both of them require compliance with state and federal and local laws related to the environment and zoning. So while it's true that there could be barriers to closing this shooting range once it opened because of that statute, I think any judge would find that the legislative intent of passing the statute, it was not the intent to prevent shooting ranges from opening up again, opening anywhere in the state, if that makes sense. What I'm saying is that it will be there whether or not we open this shooting range, and that it should not be used as a reason to not open a shooting range, because that would not be the legislative intent. But I can understand the neighbors' concerns, and what is really good is that we have a current group with the Shooting Range Association, who's very willing to work with both the county and the neighbors to make this an asset to the county that does not impede people's enjoyment of their property.
Thank you, Attorney Higgins. Are there any questions? Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Higgins. Really appreciate that, just so we all have the same information. And I've had numerous conversations, both over video and email with you, just because a number of concerns are brought up by property owners nearby. And the, I just want to, you know, reiterate that, for those that are concerned about noise and use, that this arrangement seems to give the county slash the public the most control. And not that we need to completely control it, but just so that we can work with our partners, the Flintlock Range Association, to make sure it's successful and is sensitive to community concerns. So, I appreciate that explanation, and, yeah, no other questions right now. Thank you.
Do other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Molly, I understand 8707 says that a range will not be permanently closed unless there's some safety issues and not noise. Is that correct?
That's right. We still have, there are still noise standards, though, that are in the statute, and there are noise standards in our zoning ordinance, which we can enforce.
Thank you.
Do other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, so it took me, so then you're closest to a test of it. Yeah.
All right. I believe that that covers all the questions that we have for you, Attorney Higgins. There is some background noise. I don't know if you can alleviate that or not.
I'll mute, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Well, I just want to also say that I have very close friends that live on County Route 60, and it's, I feel for them and their concerns and their fears. It feels heartbreaking. I need to look at the community as a whole and the appropriateness of this application, the public comment for this application, the evidence for this application, and weigh that with them. I do have a lot of trust and faith in the Flintlock Range Association to work with concerned community members and neighbors. I truly believe that Flintlock will be a good neighbor as well. You know, what's allowed with the CUP does not mean that's, there will not be shooting from dusk, from dawn till dusk, seven days a week. It's just that that's allowed to schedule events anywhere within that. My hope is that there would be good communication with neighbors in proximity. If there's going to be an event or a training or what have you, I know that's a significant burden, considering some of the neighbors feel like they were out of the loop in this entire process. But I think that would be a good effort. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit for an outdoor sports park, including shooting ranges and courses with public and private events on a county-owned parcel, number 53-224-2100.
Thank you. Is there a second? Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? I guess I would just say, I have attended their meetings regularly. I have been collecting information for a long time about Flintlock, and I will just be fully open with the public. I'm a DNR-certified safety instructor, and I work with the school. So potentially, school students could be utilizing the range. I want people to be aware of that. So I've kind of looked at it through the eyes of the school and an opportunity to have a place that's a little farther away than where we're currently running field days. But that is on a smaller parcel, a 40-acre parcel, just west of town, and is much more heavily populated. So I see this as being definitely an improvement upon that. And I just appreciate the fact that we're looking here at the motion for the CUP, but that we're doing it in light of a really excellent lease, and the fact that we have local, state, and federal law that also needs to be followed as well.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to be really clear. Did that motion include the adopted findings and recommendations made by the Planning Commission?
That was just for the CUP.
And that is the intention.
Okay.
Right. We'll act on them separately.
I'm sorry I didn't explicitly say that. I was just reading off of our agenda item there, so.
Right. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, this is a motion for the continual, continuous use permit?
A conditional use permit, including the findings of, the recommendations and findings of the Planning Commission.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I just also wanted to share that safety is a big factor in my thinking around this. We all have, we live in a rural area. We all have neighbors who, maybe we shoot as well, but we all have neighbors who shoot on their own property. And, you know, you can certainly hear that sometimes it can be annoying or disturbing. I don't find it to be such. My biggest concern would just be safety, like, boy, I hope they're shooting in a safe direction. I hope they're not shooting towards my property. You just never know. And so, having a place where... And so having a place where shooting activities happen, I think is just so important for safety and also that training aspect and education. I think that's really critical, too. I grew up in Grand Rapids, and we had a shooting range right in town, down by the fairgrounds. And, you know, granted, it's in town, so there is many other noises that you would, you know, get mixed up in, but I just never had a memory of the shooting range itself being problematic or a nuisance. It was more the stock cars down at the fairgrounds that would go around in circles. That was extremely loud, but that's another here, not there, so.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to the next item, which we have spoken a little bit about, which is the proposed lease. Attorney Hickon has reviewed that thoroughly, and are there any additional questions for Attorney Hickon about the lease?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached lease for county property to Flintlock Shooting Range Association, and, you know, just keeping in mind that this is in conjunction with the CUP.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the proposed lease to Flintlock Shooting Range Association. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
I just feel the need to give more background and history. This is, this project has been hoped for since before, not necessarily by me, but hoped for from our community since before I was elected county commissioner, and I've been privy to efforts moving in this direction since then. It was brought before the Parks and Trails Commission and had unanimous support from them, and I do, you know, seriously take into consideration the concerns about the perpetuity of the lease and the arrangement. I really appreciate Attorney Hickon and her time looking into that. I have heard concerns from citizens about public land, not given, but practically given to private entity for use, but I want to make clear it's not exclusive. This can be used by all joining the association, and I'm sure there's going to be fees with that. I hope there can be a scholarship for individuals who need it down the road, but just step by step in getting this constructed and implemented is kind of the first step along that path. So, yeah, again, I feel for the neighbors with their concerns. I do have faith that it won't be the worst-case scenario and that we can find mitigation for those concerns.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much.
Perfect.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return.
Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items.
I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much. I want to note, too, that we're at ten o'clock. I don't know if anybody in the room needs a break before we cover the next two items. I'm seeing some smiles. I think we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return. Thank you so much. We'll move on now to item eight, and Administrator Yorki, are you on the line? Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks so much.
That would really blow my mind.
Yeah, I think that would be family.
Even so, just want to point out that my family could not afford to move into here, and I can't imagine any of us could, but maybe. So they're making efforts, it's just I don't know to what end. And, you know, it is a private development, and they're investors, and so there needs to be a return. If, and that's part of the but-for clause and analysis. And so, I know I harp on this regularly, but I truly believe that we need to do public housing if we're going to have a solution for people to afford, to really get what we're looking for. If we want to have three-bedroom units, you know, that's not profitable for developers. So, and what that means is a lot of money coming from the county. It's not cheap to do this, as we can see from just this application and request, but in the long run, if we really want to make this a sustainable solution, we do need to do public housing. It's, otherwise, we're chasing the market and chasing dollars and getting into a similar spot as where we have been, so. And again, I've, I know I've said this before, and I've talked with Jason about it, and he's explained why and how we need to build towards that. We can't just do it. And so this is another step, potentially in that direction. We really need to just get housing to alleviate this logjam or bottleneck or whatever you want to call it on our community, and then, you know, we can start making some progress. So a whole lot of maybe irrelevant information there, but I just wanted to voice my thoughts and concerns.
Well, one thing I wanted to state is that I appreciate the fact that, given the fact that we've had a housing crisis for decades, I see great improvements recently, the fact we have our HRA, we have housing in the works, and I appreciate those private individuals. Hamilton Habitat, the Cook County group here that is establishing the 36-unit apartment complex. It takes all of us to work together to provide community housing. And so I just want to thank those people that have been involved in general in helping to create housing for the meeting of our needs. Commissioner Starley, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, that's my thinking too. You know, we have the homes in Tofti, we have the 50-unit apartment going up off the Gunflint Trail, and now we have this. So we really have, all of a sudden, a huge variety of possibilities for folks who want to sell their home and move into an apartment, or people that we need to hire with the county, places for them to go, maybe temporarily, but at least there's a good variety now. When I drive around Duluth, I'm seeing these humongous apartment sites, and it's like, oh, that's overdoing. Well, no, it's not, because you have so many different needs of incomes. That's the thing. So we aren't really overdoing anything, because we've been stagnant for so long. It may seem like it, but we aren't. But on Commissioner Mills' point, yes, there is some consideration about private investment too. So I think we need to have the public hearing, hear what folks are saying about it, and then put our ducks in a row also to how we respond to that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Anything further? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing, 9:00 AM Tuesday, February 13th. And Auditor Powers will forward that information and make sure that that gets noticed in the paper. Thank you. Administrator Yorki, would you like to go on to item B, Human Resources Staffing?
All right.
And just so you are aware, Allison Plummer, our Director of Human Resources, is here today with us.
Indeed. Thanks so much. What I wanted to do this morning was just talk about some information that we're starting to gather. I'm going to be sharing some data in this talk. You don't need to worry about taking lots of notes, because I'll be sharing everything that I'm talking about. And I want to mention too that we're just kind of in the middle of our data collection, so I don't, I don't have, there's still more information that we need. But what I wanted to do this morning is start a conversation about an emerging need that I'm seeing and to get the board's feedback on kind of a general direction for progressing what I think is a, has been a longstanding problem, and I think it's something that we are going to have to take steps to address. So first of all, in terms of the timing of this conversation, I just want to talk about a couple of things. The first is that we've been working to develop a new strategic plan for the organization. That plan includes three different initiatives focused on enhancing our workforce through additional training and promoting retention so that we have fewer people coming and going, focusing on organizational efficiency and resiliency, and then also information sharing with the community and transparency. Initiative two, which is the one that's focused on developing and maintaining a highly-trained, high-performing, and engaged workforce, is really central, I think, to our success as an organization and our ability to effectively serve the community. And so a lot of the goals that we're identifying under that initiative are really related to staff development, making sure that we have organizational infrastructure in place to attract good people, to make sure that they're adequately trained, and to make sure that we create an environment where people want to stay. I think we've talked many times about the fact that since the pandemic began, we have seen unprecedented levels of staff turnover. And in that respect, we are no different from many organizations across the country. It's well-known that the job market currently is a job-seekers market. People who are looking for work have a lot of leverage, and employers have had to step up by increasing pay, offering more generous benefit packages and so on to attract and retain employees. We certainly see a need for adopting some of these strategies, and the draft strategic plan, which we'll be bringing forward here in the next one to two months, includes goals that are focused on those areas. In looking at strategic initiative two, a lot of the goals that we have are really focused on human resources, and the responsible parties for implementing those will, not exclusively, but in most cases involve human resources on some level. And so looking at the last two, three years, again, we've had a lot of staff turnover. Just looking at 21, 2021 to 2023, in 2021, we had 37 folks leave the organization. We hired 27 people that year. In 2022, we had 46 out of 120 active staff leave their positions. We hired 49 staff that year. And then in 2023, we had 40 staff out of 140 leave their positions, and we hired 30 people last year. Now, one thing that's really important to note, and this speaks to the workload in human resources, because we are at the end of the road, because we have a pretty significant housing shortage, it is really hard to attract people from outside the county to work here. Those who may have an interest in coming to work for Cook County Government may, you know, if they're living Duluth or down in the cities, they just have to look at real estate listings and then look at our pay rates and see very quickly that, you know, they're probably not going to find housing that they can afford here. And so that's been a huge barrier for us in terms of attracting staff. We, excuse me, we have been working to, you know, try to attract more people from the local job pool, but what we're seeing is, a lot of times when we have a vacant position, we have a lot of internal interested parties, people who are already working for county government. And so a lot of this hiring and, you know, folks leaving the organization reflects internal movement. I was hoping to have for you today some percentages on what, how many of the folks who are taking new positions in the organization are already existing employees? I don't have that information yet, but we're working to get it. In any case, there's a lot of churn that's going on, and that's something that we probably won't see an end to anytime soon. And so that's one factor. So the ongoing burden of recruiting, placing job advertisements, scheduling interviews, hiring people, onboarding, offboarding, exit interviews, that is a continual workload, and it's remained pretty steady for the last several years. Looking at the strategic plan and looking at the initiatives that there's agreement among the members of the Strategic Planning Steering Committee that we want to, we want to take these steps, it's becoming pretty apparent that placing that additional burden on human resources is only going to make things more untenable for our HR staff. Currently, we have a full-time HR director, that's Allison Plummer, who's with you this morning. We have a half-time HR generalist, Kathy Polly, who does a lot of that kind of ongoing, you know, administrative and logistical work, getting those interviews scheduled, making sure that there are rooms available for interviews, et cetera. And that is, that is much of what they do. In terms of the additional time, and Allison's probably laughing as I say this, additional time that is available for things like updating policies and looking at our benefits package and responding to questions from employees about benefits, there's really not a lot of time for that kind of work. And we're focusing in the strategic plan on trying to make sure that we have updated policies, that we've got, again, the organizational infrastructure to bring people on in a good way, to make sure they get the right training, that they're onboarded properly, that they know all our policies, that the policies that they are given are up to date and make sense. That kind of work, there's a lot less time to actually get to it. And so thinking about the burden that Allison and Kathy are under, and thinking also about the fact that our last two HR directors cited burnout as one of the key reasons for leaving the position, I think we really have an obligation to make sure that we are adequately staffed in this area. So as part of a first step to understand whether there's a need to staff up in HR, we have started looking at national and also state data regarding HR staffing ratios. Different organizations have different HR staffing needs. So if you are a really diverse organization, for example, you have lots of different program or project areas, you've got lots of different kinds of positions, that's a different situation than an organization that maybe has a very flat structure where you've got a lot of positions that are basically identical, and there's not a lot of variation across the organization. So that's one factor, organizational complexity. The other big factor in determining whether you should have X number or Y number of HR employees relates to the size of the organization. There, like with many things, there's such a thing as economies of scale. Staffing, HR staffing ratios in smaller organizations tend to be higher than in larger organizations. We found some national-level data from Indeed.com, where they cited the average HR-to-employee ratio for all organizations is about 2.57. So that means that for every 100 employees that you have, you've got about 2.57 FTE HR staff. In smaller organizations, that ratio tends to be higher, about 3.4 HR employees for every 100 staff. In medium-sized organizations, and they didn't actually cite, like, I don't know what the actual, how they're defining small, medium, and large, but medium organizations tend to have ratios around 1.22 HR staff per employees, and then that ratio goes down to close to about one FTE HR person for every staff member. So there's a lot of variability, again, that organizational size and organizational complexity is our factors in how many staff you may need. And so that's one data set that we're looking at. The other thing is, we've begun, Allison's reached out to some of her peers in the Arrowhead Counties to see what their staffing looks like, and really, it varies. You know, we've got St. Louis County, they have about 1,850 permanent FTEs, they have 25 HR staff. In Acasket County, they've got about 428 employees, they've got a total of four HR staff. And so, and then looking at, let's see, Aiken County, they've got about 239 employees, and so they've got two full-time HR folks, but then they also have a full-time payroll technician that has been added to their staff. So it depends too on kind of how you're organized, how those duties are broken out. You know, we do have Nick Coner in the Auditor's Office who handles payroll for us. In some HR departments, that position is part of the HR staff. So, all of that to say, in looking at the strategic plan and the things that we want to get done from a staffing standpoint and staff retention standpoint, it's looking like we are going to have to add some staff in the Human Resources Department. The other thing about that is that, you know, we could, the way we usually do this when we're proposing new positions is we do that as part of the budget planning process. So, you know, we start in May and develop a budget proposal that we present to the board usually around the end of July. In September, the board is asked to approve the preliminary budget, and then that budget is finalized. In December, it takes effect January 1 of the following year. In looking at the timing of getting the strategic plan approved and beginning its implementation, that's probably going to happen, the implementation of the plan will probably start sometime around the second quarter of this year. In order for us to be successful implementing that plan, I believe that it's going to be necessary for us to potentially add staff to our HR department before the end of the year. And so that's not something that was in the current year budget. The reason that it isn't is because, as we were developing the strategic plan last summer, I had not really, I knew that the workload for the HR director was heavy. I did not realize how heavy it was, and I did not realize how close the person in that position at the time was to being in a place where she just could not continue doing the job. And so when it became evident that there would likely be a change in that position toward the end of last year, we had already approved a preliminary budget. And so I did not have the opportunity to incorporate that in the budget proposal for the current year. So that's why I'm bringing this up now, because I do want to make sure that as we move forward on developing and implementing our new strategic plan, that we have the resources to successfully do that. And I believe that we are going to need additional resources in our Human Resources Department to be successful in that work. And I wanted to start the discussion now with the five of you about how we can get that done. And my suggestion would be that we really need to look at potentially creating that new position in the second quarter of the year and then try to get it filled by mid-year. And that would require the use of fund balance to get that position staffed before the end of the current budget year. I am the first one to admit, that is not ideal. Ordinarily, again, we would do this as part of the budget planning process. In this instance, I think if we are going to commit to our strategic plan and, again, to be successful in implementing it, I think we're going to have to think seriously about adding to our Human Resources staff before the end of the year. And so I've been talking a lot... And so I've been talking a lot, I'm going to pause there to see if there are questions or comments.
Any questions? Commissioner Storley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to James and to Allison. I think there's a lot that goes into this decision. I guess the one thing that I'm thinking about right now is a job description. What will that person need to do in order to support Kathy and Allison? And, you know, that's, for me, that's kind of the priority to work on right now to develop that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead Administrator Yorki.
Thank you, and thank you Commissioner Storley. I think you're exactly right about that. I think there are a couple of questions. Number one, do we need, you know, if we need additional staffing, what does that look like? Is that just adding like a, a half-time position to give us two full-time HR people? Is it adding a full-time position? As a placeholder in the strategic plan, in fact, is the first goal under Initiative Two, I'm proposing that it be a 1.0 FTE, a new full-time position. Again, we're still in the process of collecting data, so I, I don't, I, I want to have a sound databases for, for whatever that recommendation ends up being. And you're exactly right, we're going to have to take a look at how we're organized currently within that department to, to assess the allocation of responsibilities between Allison and Kathy and to see whether we would need, for example, another Human Resources Generalist, or whether we might just need like an HR administrative person to help with some of those routine scheduling and logistical tasks.
Madam Chair, and may I also add, getting information from the past two folks, because you're pretty new at this, so to, you know, get some information from them that would help define what a new, another position would be.
Could I add some of my perspective into your question?
We would appreciate that.
Okay. I know this, we've just started the preliminary talks about this, but in my short time here, especially since I started with the first day of open enrollment, that I've been hit pretty hard with focusing on benefits. But overall, I think that that could potentially be the focus of an additional person. There is so much involved with our benefits package beyond just what employees see with open enrollment. It's behind the scenes of even before we get to open enrollment of what benefits are we going to continue next year? What is changing? What are we told is changing based on the, from the medical providers? What are the premiums? How is this going to impact the budget? Now we have to communicate this. Now we have to get the open enrollment information prepared to staff. We have to set up our systems to allow for open enrollment. So even though employees go through a few weeks of open enrollment, our open enrollment process technically is still continuing. It kind of wrapped up mostly at the beginning of January because we had to get those premiums and payroll deductions updated. But that is taking up a substantial time, mostly my time, because Kathy is primarily focusing on the recruitment and selection process for new staff. And so what I see this new staff member doing is probably being the primary individual for benefits and really spearheading that whole process. I also feel that there is a need to get more information out about our benefits, which we just haven't had time to do. So, for example, our health insurance has so many extra wellness, health and well-being programs attached to it that people can enroll in and utilize, and it's in my head, like, it's on my list, it's on my list, but my list is pretty long. But I also don't want that to come as a sacrifice to the information that we're providing to employees. So thus far, in my perspective, in my role, I see that being allocating a lot more time to the benefit section, and potentially that could be where maybe that, that new staff member would start off.
Other questions for either Allison or for Administrator Yorki? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Administrator Yorki for the, for the info, your thoughts and, and the background there. Yeah, I, I witnessed firsthand the burnout of our first full-time HR Director, and this is, this was a professor, a doctor in the field, someone who had incredible skills, and we really tried to do everything we could to help alleviate that burnout, including additional hiring for a support person in that halftime position, as well as reducing the hours required for, for the, the HR Director position. And then also witnessed the burnout of another highly qualified, skilled individual, former president of the labor union, and hearing the perspectives of other counties around the state, around the region, the challenges they're going through. I think you're spot on, that this is not, the churn is not going to end anytime really soon, but, you know, we can, we can do something about that. We can work towards either slowing it down or stopping it by providing support to staff as, as, as a starting point. If we see deficiencies in our organization, we, we absolutely have to address it. If, if our organization is, is not performing or, you know, doing all it can for our community, we need to refine that and, and make it better. So I think it makes a whole lot of sense. I appreciate the ratios. I have very little perspective on, on that, and it helps, helps me get a, a grasp of, of what's a realistic expectation and, you know, in, in my opinion, the sooner the better, because in the meanwhile, there's more damage being done, and I, I care deeply about our staff and, and, and our, and our organization and our community, of course. So don't need to necessarily rush it, but I, I do want to put this as a priority if, if we can.
Other Commissioners.
I guess I'd like to just share, when numbers were shared at the beginning of this discussion, that we were down 37 people the first year, 27 were hired, then we were down 46, we hired 49, then we were down 40, we hired back 30. That brought me back to employees that I used to work with in a former position I held, and I remember one year bringing in 29 employees, doing the hiring, the advertising, the interviewing, the onboarding, and what a challenge that was. And I remember how burned out I felt, I still remember it, and it was back in 1995, and I haven't forgotten it. So thinking of that churn, as we refer to it, I think it's important that we do something to address that. And I appreciate approaching it in a manner where we're collecting not only national data and state data, but where you've gone to Arrowhead Counties and gotten additional information, and I appreciate looking at this through the lens of our strategic plan. I think that's an excellent approach and the way we should move forward, and so I just want to thank Allison Yu and Administrator Yorki and those on the strategic plan for their thoughtfulness about this and for the use of data.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, well, thank you both. Appreciate Allison Yu taking the time to join with us today. And Administrator Yorki, do you have any updates that you would like to share with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. A couple of things. Number one, I just wanted to make everybody aware that the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee is meeting this afternoon. We are going to be talking about the architectural proposals that the county received related to the Creek County Judicial Center, and then we're also going to be talking about the construction management proposal that we received. We issued that call for proposals. At the end of last year, we did receive one proposal, and it's from a very qualified firm, but I, I have real concerns about moving forward without having additional proposals to consider. And so we'll be having that conversation with the Advisory Committee this afternoon to, to plot a path forward, and I'll be sharing information about that discussion at the meeting on February 13th, that is, the county board meeting on the 13th. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we have been following up with Minnesota Management and Budget regarding the bonding proposals that we've submitted. The county has two proposals under consideration, one for the Judicial Center, the other in partnership with North Shore Waste for the transfer station that is proposed to be constructed east of town, just, just west of the current transfer station site. We're working with MMB to make sure that we're doing everything possible to make the, both applications competitive for bonding. Tuesday last week, Governor Walz released his bonding recommendations. He did not recommend any local projects specifically for, for funding, which is not a deal breaker for us. There's another process working with our legislators to get bills introduced for consideration for funding in the legislative session. And so that's something that we've begun to do. I've been in contact with, with Senator Hostchild's office on, on our applications, and then I'm also reaching out to Representative Scraba's office to make sure that, again, those are, those are going to be considered in the House and the Senate, and hopefully we can get some bills drafted and have those in the running for, for funding. Another thing that I'll mention, I mean, I, I'm trying to get a read on, you know, how optimistic or pessimistic should we be about our chances of getting funding? And I'm hearing different signals from, from different folks. We had a phone call with Senator Hostchild just yesterday about the transfer station project. He was expressing some pessimism about getting local project funding in this bonding cycle. But I'm also hearing that, you know, yes, there's, there's not going to be a lot of cash available for local projects, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't get bonding. And so there are a lot of missing parts, and I think at this stage in the, in the session, it's probably too early to get too hopeful or too gloomy about our chances. It's always an uphill battle, and we do know, excuse me, we do know that there are far more requests for funding than there are available dollars. And so I, I've been really cautious about overselling our chances, because I don't want to be unrealistic about the likelihood of getting help from the state. But on the other hand, I do want to make a full court press and do everything that we can on our end to make sure that we're heard in St. Paul and that, that we receive due consideration as these projects are, are discussed. So that's, that's what I have, and happy to answer any questions or, or hear any concerns that Commissioners may have.
Any questions or concerns?
I am not seeing any Administrator Yorki, so thank you so much for your updates.
Thank you.
We'll move now, on now to our employee concerns and Commissioner concerns. We had a number of Commissioner meetings in January, a lot of organizational meetings. And so as you're giving your updates and reports, one thing I would appreciate, and we'll make sure that we get this in the minutes, is if you are serving on a committee and you're a secretary, or you're a chair, you have some type of additional role, if you would please share that so that we have that information for our records. And let's start with Commissioner Hawkins this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Well, HRA meeting on Wednesday, and, and Commissioner Storley, I want to speak to, yeah, there's lots of projects in the works. I'd say cross your fingers, because everybody's experiencing construction cost increases. And I am very hopeful Jason's doing everything he can to make sure projects stay on track and continue on, and the Board is very supportive, but we have nothing built yet. So just heads up about that. I also want to report Highway Advisory, very fun meeting. It's one of my favorite ones. But we discussed snow removal policy, and the thing that I found really fascinating and fun is there's a effort to do language signs for eight crossings. And you're going to ask me what the eight, where the eight places are, and I don't remember all of them right now, but we saw a prototype of the signs, and then Chairman Deschamps got Eric Reddicks on the phone, because of course I ask, well, how do you pronounce that? And he got somebody on the phone too, and then we talked about it. But look forward to more info, that coming out and more stories being told about the background of some of those names. So that was fun. And the third thing was Community Center. Thank you for the bylaw changes that were in the board packet this morning, or consent agenda. But been a lot of work to just make sure we're all on the same page of what, what's really happening at the Community Center and who's in charge of what, so for that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. And just regarding the Highway Advisory Committee, I have yet to do the follow-up contact and list of names. I had a, a person in, in my district who, who wants to communicate some concerns, but one I just wanted to pass on was right-of-way clearing, kind of more in the shoulder seasons.
Yes.
And, and I thought that's a-
I could probably guess who that was.
Yeah, and it's a worthwhile, it's, it's a safety issue, it, it's about maintaining power lines too, you know, it's, it's, it's important. And so I wanted to pass that concern on, and then I'll, of course, follow up too, but thank you for that update.
All right, thank you. Commissioner White.
Um, oh, Commissioner Hawkins, any committees where you are serving in a role as Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, anything that we should make note of?
Um, ARC, I'm Vice Chair right now. We'll probably go to change that next month, I wonder. So that's the only thing I can-
All right, I just want to keep track of that, because that does require some additional work at times. Commissioner White.
Oh, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board Retreat, and we have a healthy community businesses. There was discussion about the cannabis issue, and one of the participants was explaining the extensive regulations that, for not just having retail, but all of the background, like, how do you get the, how do you get the product to your location? Who grows the product? Who, how do you verify? He said, I've read the 300 pages more than once, and it's, it's extensive, but there's a couple of community business people that would like to embark on that or can, continue to investigate being providers of cannabis if they do not have to be in competition with the county. Another idea that was discussed about the capital improvement plan, particularly about the deferred maintenance of the buildings, and the, the sole bid that has come in, over a million dollars, to have a project manager oversee these. The question was, well, these are all buildings that had the resources been available to our maintenance department to take care of these buildings through the course of time. time. Our maintenance department, with the help of local subcontractors, to do the licensed work for plumbing, electrical, getting roofers, not, so not all department staff would be engaged in every aspect of these buildings. But since now, we have a very thorough assessment of each of the buildings and even a timeline of importance for addressing these concerns, would it not be possible to save a million dollars and not hire an outside construction management? This is not a one-year project. It's a, it's over the course of many years. And have perhaps, like, the Highway Department has an advisory committee that, where Robbie Hass leads the meetings, he explains what's been going on, talks about the availability of salt sand, talks about people wanting to have their roads taken over by the county. The people that are in attendance, sit on this committee, know about roads. They know about gravel. They know about plowing. These are people that are in the field or have experience with transportation and road construction in Cook County. Not that they've done it, but they know, they know where these projects are, that they have some experience. So the question was, could there not be a committee that would help with our local, now, Brian Silas, or someone from that area of the county, or area of our organization that works with our buildings and works with keeping them up to speed? And that, could they not oversee the implementation of the deferred maintenance as opposed to having somebody from the outside coming in to do this? And the people at that retreat thought it would be a possibility that should strongly be investigated because it would then, couple of things. We would keep it in-house. We have, as it would have been in-house had the funding been there before. And we would not be paying, we would not be putting out a million dollars to somebody from the outside world. A lot that had been discussed and is often on residents' minds, our past experience, experience of hiring orb management, an outside consulting firm that was going to protect the county and have our best interests at heart. It didn't go so well. And we are continually, continually paying for shortcomings of the construction of the library, of the YMCA, of different things. And this particular group felt that, and I agree, that people that live here and our own department heads care more about these buildings than anybody from the outside world would. I've not yet heard anybody in this county say, well, we shouldn't be spending money to fix these buildings. Everyone seemed, everyone, generalization. Everyone seems to be in support of fixing the county-owned buildings. So it was an idea, rather than putting it out to one person, because orb management also came highly recommended. And it doesn't always, it doesn't always turn out as one would hope. And also, we need to have local eyes, even if someone from the outside world, an outside person were to be hired, to have eyes on what's actually happening. We didn't have that last time around. And I, and so that was the big thing. We did the Active Living Steering Committee, and that is always a very positive, I feel like sometimes that I've been trotting alongside, trying to keep up with all the activities that these Active Living people are doing. So that was the other thing that I did. So that's about it.
I have a quick question, Commissioner White, because I'm going to be, as Commissioner Hawkins, at the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee this afternoon. Was this a request, the idea of a local project manager or local contractors working? Was this a request of the chamber?
It was, I was asked about what's going on with this. And if you've only gotten one, if you have only gotten one bid, are you going to go after another bid? And then the discussion rolled around. It was one of these organic, it rolled around to the past experience, building the YMCA and hockey rinks and fixing buildings that we have here, to how about, as one person said, we have a lot of talent in this community, lot of experienced, a lot of people with experience in buildings and what it takes.
All right. Well, thank you. Because I just wanted to make sure I had that accurate information.
It wasn't on their agenda. It was part of a conversation that ensued from-
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Other questions?
Yeah, I had the same one. I was like, wait, the chamber is talking? Because I don't think we've heard anything from the chamber to date regarding the CIP.
It was, it was the, it was a question of what is happening at the county. And this, of course, is what's happening at the county. So that went that way. And it was over lunch, it was before lunch and through lunch. And it was, thought that, I got the impression it was something worth checking out.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins?
I just want to speak to that because I attended in replace of Deb one time, and it was discussed by the chamber members, the bonding application for the county CIP plan. And there was quite a good discussion about that there.
All right. I haven't heard much of that, I guess. So that's interesting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Administrator Yorki.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, too, after we completed the draft of the CIP, I was asked to provide an overview of it to the chamber membership, which I did this past summer.
All right. Thank you. That's helpful to know as well. All right. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. Yeah, and I think those are great suggestions. We tried forming a building committee years back. I don't remember how many. And really struggled with that. Nobody stepped, or not enough people stepped forward. And so that's why we kind of rolled it into the Budget and Facilities Committee together. We have such an amazing talent pool in this community and so many skills and abilities. But we also have a limited, we have limited schedules, so not everyone is able to do all that they want to. But I don't think we can't try that again. I think that's a great idea. And like you say, having that experience and perspective on that is invaluable. I do want to speak a little bit to the process that the City of Grand Marais went through with their construction manager, McGough, because that went very well, and they'll be doing another one. So, you know, my involvement was much further removed back when the 1% sales tax was passed and the projects were developed. But, you know, my memory is that, you know, potentially, it was the company. A lot of it, I think, had to do with trying to save a million dollars, which we need to be prudent with taxpayer money, absolutely. But we also need to be as professional as we can. And that doesn't mean not having an advisory committee. But I do think we need to up our game on that. And I do, I do think we need to get beyond the bad experiences we've had. We need to build off of good ones and, you know, try to look to the future. So don't want to say it never happened at all. I want to fully recognize that. But I also want to fully recognize that we can learn from that and come at it from, with our eyes wide open. So we'll, I'm sure, be having many more conversations as funding and designs come forward. But as far as my reports are concerned, oh, I had a EDA board meeting, and the Cedar Grove Business Park, I believe, has only three lots left. There was a little bit of discussion about the property that has been set aside as residential north of the park, and there's been interest in that the last couple of years. The EDA board as a whole isn't, isn't so keen on that as residential. There's a number of residential projects going forward. And so the board's thinking is to see how those go and then see what our needs are. I think we'll still have great needs. There was also concerns raised just about the feel of the neighborhood, driving through a business park to get to your home, and concerns about that. And I think it's a pretty pleasant area and surrounded by woods and all that. So I'd like to stay open about that. But the EDA is also talking about, like, business park phase two. There just isn't that much business property in our community. And so I'm open to that, too. But that's a ways out. So, but it's just good to hear, hear what people are thinking and trying to plan for in the future, needs that we don't even know we have yet. Let's see, tonight, we have Parks and Trails. I will not be an officer in, well, not, no longer on AHA, so no longer an officer there. I do not, I do not know if I'll be an officer for CHB. I do not anticipate being the chair anymore. I am the president of the Library Board. And I don't think I have other officer positions. Used to be with the EDA, but I got out of that. Not that that was any substantive amount of time for that role. Yeah, I guess that's all for now. I'm sure I'll think of something here.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Storey?
Yes, ma'am. I'll start off with what I'm doing. I'm the vice chair of Northern Minnesota Housing Consortium, treasurer of the Association of Minnesota Counties. And my definite report here is on the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission, which I'm chairman of that board. But we also have a commission. So the board that I'm involved in meets every month. The commission meets four times a year. And the commission makes up of people from large cities, over 10,000, small cities, under 10,000, school board, township. So it's a large group that we come together and we have an agenda. And on that agenda, we incorporate what they're doing in those areas. And I want to give a shout out to Cook County, who has a representative, Mike Gary. Now, I had not met him when he came to the meeting. I said, where have you been? That's great that you're coming all the way down to Duluth because he does, they do get mileage. So we do pay four times a year for those folks to come and be a part of our commission. So we just had, a couple of weeks ago, we just had the nominations of accepting all these people. We have some vacancies, of course. And maybe by our next meeting with the commission in February, we might have a couple of people joining. But we are lacking a representative from Aiken County. So it's a, it's a great group, and there, again, we share and talk about what's going on, and then they come back. Now, I'm not sure if Mike Gary goes to the city council. He's not come here, but I think he goes to the city council.
He's a city council.
I'm going to invite him here, and he can give a report, his perspective about representing Cook County. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, as I take a look, Commissioner Hawkins and I attended the Personnel Committee last week and just talked about the vacant positions that we have and the needs that we have, and that housing is continuing to be an issue and a priority we want to address. Rainy River Vermilion Headwaters, One Watershed One Plan. As you heard this morning, we're having our public hearing on Friday, and then the Policy Committee will take any information from that public hearing if need to alter or make an adaptation on the plan. And that will be submitted to Bowser, the Board of Soil and Water Resources. Cook County Historical Society, Maria Wiannan, who had been the president, has resigned. And Myron Bershheim is standing in for her. They did not have a quorum at their last meeting, so they were not able to do any voting or make any decisions. But he's continuing in his role until next month, when hopefully, there will be a quorum and they have an election of officers. We had the Airport Advisory Commission last week, our organizational meeting, and welcomed three new individuals as members. And then we are very excited that the FAA approved the airport forecast. We've been waiting for about a year for that. And so that means that now the master planning process can continue to move forward. So now we're going to hurry up and wait for the FAA to contact us for next meeting. But it is good. We got that response and that everything is in order. Appreciate that greatly. Yesterday, we had our Safety Committee, and we're looking at, for this year, fire extinguisher training and then also some ways to make sure that employees are very familiar with where our fire extinguishers and AEDs are located in all of our buildings. So I appreciate that both Adriana and Jana are working to help our employees with that. Number of us attended a webinar. The MCIT Open Meeting Law was explained earlier this week, and that was very valuable. And Administrator Yorki sent out slides. I still have questions, so I'll be looking forward to visiting with Attorney Hickon when she gets back to visit on those items. And Commissioner Hawkins, you have a question about it?
No, I just reminded me that I went to hospital board, and they had a similar presentation.
Yes.
So I got to sit through it again, and it was, it was kind of good from a different angle.
Yeah.
So I think those slides are available online somewhere.
Yeah.
If you want to check out what the hospital board learned.
All right. That's good to know. And open meeting, it's always good to look at all the perspectives and to look at all the different situational things that are discussed. So really good for all of us. Tomorrow, there is a Cook County Local Energy Project Meeting I'll be attending, and Firewise later this week, and then up to Ely. I would like to note that I'm, let's see, Secretary of the Airport Commission, Chair of the Rainy River Vermilion River Watershed One Plan, and some other things potentially in the future. And just a reminder for commissioners, we're working with our electronic calendars to keep track of all our work and effort. I appreciate that Commissioner White was talking about her use of that, but making sure we're keeping track of our meetings, work with constituents and things like that, research we're doing. And then a reminder also that our annual statement of economic interest is due to the State of Minnesota. Commissioners, do this on an annual basis. It's due this week, the 29th. So make sure that that has been submitted. And that would be all I have to share this morning. Anything else related to our updates? Now, we have a number of meetings on our list coming up in January and February. We have correspondence and memos, then November lodging tax, and our sales tax report through November. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Support. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Anything further? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.